As clerk of the Hadley Council on Aging, I call this meeting to order.
You should be as the select board, Jane.
I'm sorry. Thank you. As clerk of the select board. Too many offices. Thank you, Randy.
Certainly.
As clerk of the select board, I call this meeting to order, and I would like to introduce our new members. Molly Keegan, would you please wave? And Randy Isner. And a thanks to David Phil and John Roskevitz for all they have done for the town and years that they have served on the select board. Thank you. All right. So the first order of business is the reorganization of the select board. So we need a chair and a clerk.
So I'll make a motion. My tallies are correct. I believe that a normal rotation would go to Jane at this point. So I'll make a motion for Jane Nevin Smith to be the board chair for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Jennifer?
Roll call, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chungaloo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now I need a clerk, please.
Don't everybody jump at once.
Yeah.
Joyce, I would like to nominate Joyce.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second for Joyce to be clerk.
Oh, great.
Jennifer?
I'm off. Okay.
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chungaloo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, funky.
I love not being the last person to vote anymore. That was the funnest time.
So as was stated earlier in an earlier meeting, we're going to now determine the starting time and date of in-person for the select board and hybrid meetings combined, and then set the remaining schedule. Is there, can I have discussion from the board, please? Thoughts on this process?
Question number one, what does in-person and hybrid, what does that look like?
I believe the state requirement is that four of the five of us need to be present in person for a meeting to happen. So that is at a site which, in this case, will be the Council on Aging. That's going to be our new home for meetings. So for-
Jane, can I just clarify?
Sure, go ahead.
Right now, you are still able to meet. The whole board does not have to be that you don't have to have the majority of the board in person. So we're still under until July 15th. That may change at that point, but you can have a mixture of meeting remotely of your board.
So I just have a question about that. If, for instance, we have a board meeting and two people are in person and three people are on the computer, that's still okay?
Yeah, as long as Hadley Media can handle that.
All right. I've seen them do that, so I'd assume that works. All right.
Can Hadley Media do that?
John?
John might have stepped away, but I'll answer that yes, Hadley Media and I can handle that.
Great, thank you. And when do we want to start having in-person meetings?
September.
But is there, did you say July 15th?
I said, I said September.
I think there's, I'm asking if the state has allowed that to continue.
You can do hybrid at any point. And until we hear otherwise, you can, the mixture of the board does not have to, everyone does not have to be in person. Before COVID, only one person could be remote.
Okay. Can I ask-
My thoughts are is that they're still COVID, very well present. My daughter tested positive today, so anybody that used her pen after her yesterday could very well, she was unaware. She's been fully vaxxed. And I'm sure she doesn't mind me sharing because she actually said to me, what about the person that used the pen after me yesterday? She swabbed, she washed her hands when she came in and she washed her hands when she went out. But that doesn't necessarily mean the same person after her did the same thing. I'm testing negative. I'm not sure where we're picking it up. I have several people, 30% of my providers are out of the office right now. So it is very well out there still. People are going to the hospital and not being COVID admitted, but as they are being admitted for other illnesses, they are testing positive for COVID. So my thoughts are is that we still need to be very cautious and careful.
Molly?
Yeah, I mean, I would say I would love to go hybrid as soon as it is reasonably safe to do so. I think, you know, I think everybody's all zoomed out at this point. I think that the hybrid meetings that I've either participated in or have watched seem to be working really well. So I really appreciate the fact that Hadley Media and Jennifer have worked on that technology to make it happen because there there is something to be said for people being, being in a room together. I think it's just a different dynamic that happens there. But, you know, certainly I would defer to you know, the numbers, you know, Board of Health and the opinion of others as to what is safe at this point. You know, I agree with Joyce, everything I know right now is that the numbers indeed are climbing quite dramatically. And, you know-
We have Susan Mosler that just popped up, I see.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna say, I don't know if we want to make the decision to defer to September right now. I think maybe this is an ongoing discussion we have as things evolve.
Susan, do you want to add any comments as Board of Health?
I can share some information with you. I just got the, you know, I get the reporting data from the state on cases. You have to understand, it's estimated now that only 7% of actual infections are being reported on the state database because of home testing. So that being said, Hadley, this is for the last two weeks, Hadley had 48, which is up. Amherst had 701, which is way up, and North Hampton had 325 positive cases, which is way up as well. I think, you know, at this point, public health is not really looking at the number of infections. The metric is, is our hospital capacity. And you know, right now, our hospital capacity is not being stretched. So, you know, the general feeling seems to be that, you know, most of us are gonna have a COVID infection. And if we're vaccinated and medications are available, if you're over 65 or in a high-risk group, you know, so be it. So I think it's a very personal decision, you know, the risk benefit for every individual.
That's why it would be possible to have some people in person and others who are nervous about being there, remote.
Yeah, the Board of Health has been doing the hybrid meetings. They're terrific. We have not had any problems.
Okay. Amy, do you have something you want to put in on this?
Not really. It's I'm not muted. I just, it doesn't matter to me whether we meet in person or not.
Okay, Randy, do you have an input?
So I was just gonna ask if we, can we do this on a, you know, a month-by-month basis? We don't have to, as Molly said, we don't necessarily need to decide right now that September is appropriate, but I agree with Susan and Joyce that there are still COVID issues out there, and they're probably going to be for quite some time. So if we can just do it on a rolling basis, so to speak, so that we don't have to put ourselves in a box right now.
Well, what if we made it an agenda item for the first meeting of every month? And then we would say, this month, we're ready to go, or this month, we're gonna still stay remote?
That sounds fine to me.
All right. Do we need a motion and a vote on that?
I'll make a motion to have an agenda item on whether we have in-person or hybrid meetings versus total Zoom meetings at that, every monthly meeting, the first meeting of the month.
Okay.
Second that.
Molly, second. All right, roll call, please, Jennifer?
Roll call, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chungaloo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. And there's a list in the agenda of the oh, wait, I'd like to go back. I'd like to talk about the starting time of the meeting. My personal preference would be 6:30 instead of 6 o'clock, but I don't know about the rest of you. How do you feel? Joyce?
I like six. We have so much on our agenda sometimes that instead of going until 10 o'clock or whatever, sometimes it'll hit you for 9:30 or 9 o'clock. So that's late enough for me.
Yeah, I have to get up at 4:30 in the morning for work now, since I work in Connecticut, so earlier the better.
Molly?
I'm fine with either. You know, I think in the past, the concern about starting earlier has been, you know, if we're looking to maximize public input, wanting to make sure that people have the opportunity to be home, 6 o'clock's right at the dinner hour. But that said, I also have watched many meetings that have extended for a long period of time. So I have to say, I prefer the earlier start than the 7 o'clock start that we used to do.
Randy?
I have no preference. Doesn't matter really to me.
While we're still meeting by Zoom, 8 o'clock, and then revisit it once we decide we're gonna do something different. Does that work for everyone? Okay.
Yes.
Since we're leaving it the same, I assume we don't need a motion for that. Okay, there is a list in the agenda of first and third Wednesdays up through December 21st. Are there any of those dates that people have trouble attending?
Yeah, the week of July 20th. I'm on vacation the 17th through the 24th, but if I, if I had to, and we were hybrid, I suppose I could log in.
Well, and if we're gonna always have a hybrid component to it, then that may be a possibility.
I'll probably be up at the beach most of the time, so I'll be zooming from Salisbury.
I don't have anything that I'm aware of right now, but if something comes up, then I agree with Molly and Joyce that I always have a computer with me so I can get into a meeting without any problem.
I will be traveling on a couple of those days, but assuming that where I am has internet, I will be able to join. All right, so as a tentative schedule, we will leave this first and the third Wednesdays of every month through December 21st. Do you want to vote on that?
Jane? Did you, did you happen to notice that Carolyn and I added that extra meeting on June 22nd?
What reason?
Procurement. We need you to vote on a ton of procurement.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be long. It's just we do need a third meeting that month.
All right.
Yep, it's fine.
We may ultimately need third meetings anyway, but let's get started and see how we do with two.
Yeah, two will be my limit.
Yeah, well, okay, I hear you, and I think that's true for everyone. And the question is, two that are longer or three that are shorter, so?
Well, it's either that or we have all of our other committees that we go to. So we have many other things that we are committed to besides just the select board meetings themselves. So it's juggling our schedule and being available for our other committees is sometimes a little difficult.
I agree. All right, is there any other business about reorganizing? Anybody have anything else they want to say? Okay, moving on to the tenth agenda, 3.1. Warrant articles, AP 2241, AP 2242S, AP 2242 VR 2222, AP 2243, AP 2244V, AP 2244S, AP 2244. The minutes of the June 2nd, 2001, the June 23rd, 2001, and the July 21st, 2001 meetings are attached. I assume you haven't seen them. A one-day liquor license for V1 vodka, changing the date from June 4th to May 28th, and an additional date of June 11th. Use of the town common, the Rex McCabe family bridal shower, July 30th, 2022, on the South Commons. A one-day liquor license for Homewood Suites in the Amherst Chin area Chamber of Commerce, June 1st, 2022. A one-day liquor license for Leadfoot Brewing LLC, May 29th, May 30th, and June 19th at Maple Valley Creamery at 102 Mill Valley Road. Are there any questions? Any comments? Randy, you're muted.
You, when you said the minutes, Jane, you said 2001, not 2021?
2021, thank you.
And then, since I was not here for any of that stuff, is it appropriate for me to vote on it?
Probably not, but I don't know.
You, you can, because you're not, you are able to vote if you're not there, but you don't have to. If you're more comfortable abstaining, you can abstain. But board members who aren't at that meeting can approve them.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Jennifer? Roll call vote, please. You're muted.
I need a motion and a second.
I'm sorry, a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Thank you.
Motion by Molly, second by Amy. Roll call vote, please.
Roll call, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chungaloo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, it's time for public comment. Public comment period is limited to three minutes per person. If you're interested in speaking, please wave your digital hand or somehow let us know that you're interested in saying something. Does anyone see any hands waving around? All right, seeing none, we will continue. So I just want to point out that we try to have a time schedule figure, but sometimes if things move quicker than we want, we're not gonna just sit around and wait for the time to pass. We will keep moving forward in the meeting. If someone has a time schedule and they're not present, then we will, the people who are speaking into order there. So the mosquito opt-out committee update. The mosquito opt-out committee was approved, I'm speaking for them as their liaison, by the town, fall town meeting, to have a document that requires the town to be, not, I'll let Bobby talk, she can do that. Bobby, you're here? Thought I saw her. Bobby came in. Yes, I see her. Okay. You're up, Bobby.
She's come in and out two times. I think she might be having some problems with her microphone, so we might need to give her just a moment.
Okay, thank you. There you are.
Okay, finally, success. Okay, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'll make it very brief. I do want to thank Jane for all her good guidance and sticking with us on this. She did pitch in, and also the committee members. Tony Lynn Morelli, Shel Horowitz, Michelle Michelle Morris Friedman. We all did our part in this, in putting it together. And I also want to thank Jennifer and Jessica for guiding me through the minds of, filled minds of town meetings. So thank you very much. So just a brief overview, Jane did say that we were appointed by the select board last fall as a result of the vote by the town to opt out. We have been meeting regularly, collecting data, working with the Pioneer Valley Mosquito Control District, following what's happened surveillance. Hadley is a very low-risk area for mosquitoes, West Nile, and EEE. The Pioneer Valley Mosquito Control District does do regular testing around town. There was one incidence of West Nile, which is not uncommon. Mosquito sample on Venture Way last August, but Board of Health was well informed of that as, and it wasn't a real risk to the town. What you have before you, and you should have received your documents, is the application that we would like to be submitting to the it goes to the state Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. Their approval is very much based on what the risk level is for the town of Hadley, meaning we are low-risk means that we do have a good chance of being approved for opt-out, and this would be for the calendar year of 2022. We have, what we really had to put together was an outreach and education plan, which is what you have probably in front of you or have all seen. Hopefully, you have seen that. And it does outline a number of things that we either have already done or plan to do in terms of educating the public as to what the risk of how to prevent mosquito bites. We're dealing with this as a very, as a public health issue. Mosquitoes are a nuisance, but there's certainly many things people can do, take personal responsibility to prevent mosquito bites. We had a very successful last Saturday tire recycling event with Firestone. Tires collect a lot of water, and standing water is one of the biggest problems in terms of breeding mosquitoes. So we're both hoping people prevent bites as well as mitigate the the, the standing water in their, in the communities to slow down the breeding of mosquitoes. 65 tires were brought to Firestone last Saturday, which was really incredible, good start for the town. A lot of residents brought their tires. We've been using a lot of Department of Public Health publications, working with the Board of Health, who are supporting us in this effort. And we feel like we have some real opportunities here. Jane has worked with the schools. There's a number of posters in school buildings. There are posters out there in some of the, like, Vestra Senior Living facilities as such. So we hope to continue this work in terms of outreach and prevention and education. Our application will reflect such. And we, the deadline, the deadline for submission is May 27th, so we will get this to them ASAP. And just wanted to share this information with you all, and just wondered what kind of questions you might have on the, on the effort.
Anyone have any questions for Bobby?
Yeah, I just got one question. So I just want to better understand, you submit the application, then they've got some amount of time to approve it, or I'm not sure whether they would deny it, but what exactly happens after you get the approval then?
Very good question. We will get notification that they have, hopefully have approved it. And I don't know what the timeline is. They were, they were very, they weren't really good on timelines this year. We didn't even get the 2022 application until April. It wasn't put forth. We waited the whole year for it. So I don't have the exact time, but basically, once they approve it, but what it means is that the town opts out of any aerial spraying, that the, there's a, there's a group called the State Reclamation and Mosquito Control Board, SCR MB to MCB. I can get you the information, but basically, they're the ones that, and they generally would only do aerial spraying if there, there were a public health emergency with EEE, Eastern Equine Encephalitis. But we were opting out of having aerial spraying and leaving it up to people to take personal responsibility, prevention of mosquito bites, make sure the kids, you know, are protected, how to use repellents carefully and healthfully and such. So, answer your question directly. Molly, I don't have a timeline of when it'll be approved. They don't tell us that when we put the application. Hopefully, within the month.
Any other questions? Thank you, Bobby, and the committee. You've done a great job on this, and I assume
Thank you, Jane.
Be doing it again for the following years?
I hope so.
You can have a little respite in the interim?
Okay. Thank you.
All right, new business. The ban. Linda, are you in?
Yeah. Okay. Yes, I wanted to update you on where we stand with our bans. And you recall, while we were in the construction process, we had many, many bans going at the same time. As of the end of '21, we did just a single bar, we actually just did two borrowings in '21 that were due in '22. One of them was a, we paid off the full $100,000 of our remaining ban to Adams Community Bank in the fall, and we're paying the second ban. We have a ban of $787,175 due the June 2nd, and that's with Greenfield Cooperative Bank. We're paying, of that amount, we are completely paying down principal of $317,861, meaning that we are rolling over the $469,000 or so into the new ban. The, we did bids this morning. Our total ban, since we have $573,000 in new borrowing, our total ban was for $1,042,842. And the lowest ban, again, is Greenfield Cooperative Bank, and that came in at 1.7%. The interest rates are higher than we've seen in the past. The one that we are paying off to Greenfield Community from just a, Greenfield Cooperative from just a year ago, for example, is 0.35%, which is amazingly low, but we're still very, doing very well at 1.7. Of the six bids, we had three under 2% and three over 2%. So we were happy to get to get those bids. Let's see. So yeah, I wanted to point out to you how much we were actually paying out of these bans each year, that this is not just simply a rollover. They just don't come due when we renew them, that we do pay off. And that is due to the amount, it's, it's in the budget. That's the amount that we're paying from, in the principal and debt and interest, principal and interest part of the budget. So we're trying to get, we pay chunks of our principal off each year so that we have room for borrowing more. So it's kind of, it's, it's an ongoing system, and it works for us very well, and allows us to keep an even debt and interest payment schedule from year to year. So that is it. Those, that award went out this afternoon. I've been working with David Eisenfeld on the paperwork. He was getting it done and to come out to us, and it should be in Town Hall tomorrow by FedEx. So I need, we will need at least three of you by the end of Monday to come through. of you by the end of Monday to come through, and once I've set up the paperwork to sign where indicated, and then so that I'll be able to upload it to Department of Revenue on Tuesday, and then we will do these payoffs and get our new amounts the first week in June.
Any questions for Linda?
Yeah, I just have a quick question, Linda, when you did the, put together the budget for the debt and interest, what sort of interest rate were you, was used as a presumption throughout the year?
I, I always use a higher than anticipated one, I think I use 3%. And that way, the amount of principal and interest that we pay through the budget is going to be the same, the total will be the same. But, and if we have, if we're paying less interest than was anticipated, that means we will be able to pay off more principal, which is what, which is how we balance those two budgets each year, so that we make sure that our total payment between the two is the same. So, that's, that's really it, just as when we were doing the bonds, we were estimating 5% and then 4%. And the bonds ended up coming, actually, one was 2.8% and one was 1.955. And that really benefits us in that we've, we've estimated a good payment that we can do, but when it actually comes to making those payments, we end up being able to pay off more of the principal, which means we have less to roll over into the new borrowing in the next year and allows us to, to put the borrowing towards the new writing that the town has approved. And we only, the actual borrowing that the town has approved is higher than these amounts that we are borrowing. I work closely with department heads and make sure that we only borrow what they know they actually need at this time. And if they don't need it by July 1, we put it off and we will borrow it in the next year. And that, that in itself is, is equally effective in keeping our interest rate down because we're applying the interest to a lower principal amount. So, we do our best.
And you do a wonderful job, thank you.
Yeah, I, I'd like to say that I like your policies, Linda, very good.
Good, all right, I, I would like to get more of this into the budget book. I, I realize that there's a lot of this kind of information that you, a select board, should probably have. So, we're looking into making supplements to the budget books so that you have that kind of information, what are we borrowing, how much is our outstanding principal? The first thing I want to do to get into that budget book is what we actually voted at town meeting, since the budget book is always what's proposed two or three months before town meeting, now that we've actually voted on it, we should have, you know, we will have sections that you can add to your budget books that will show what we voted at town meeting. And then, if we make adjustments in the fall, you'll be able to get that in. And I was thinking too, a few pages on where we stand with these, with the borrowing and the interest rates and what we're paying on these, probably would be useful for you to have as well. So, if there's other things that you want to be able to, to have, people ask you about, just let me know, and usually I, we can just add a little bit to that and have you better informed.
Thank you.
Sounds great.
Okay.
All right, moving along, 6.2, Hadley Police Department, Mike?
Good evening, everyone. Anybody else get feedback?
No.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so tonight I will be recommending three officers are special police officer ranks up to fill the vacancies that we have in our full-time ranks. Most of you have heard me ad nauseam talk about the problems that we're having with recruitment and retention for the edification of Molly and Randy. Molly, I'm sure you, you know, you remember from that when you were on the board in the past, we have these obstacles we have to overcome with wages and things like that to make sure that we can keep officers for, you know, for the, the long run. And with the new post requirements and the requirements set forth by the MPTC, we are finally in a position where we can fill these vacancies. Over the course of the last several months, we lost, I don't know, probably 20% of our full-time staff to other agencies for higher wage. We are in negotiations right now to try to remedy some of that, but on a positive note, I have three amazing individuals to recommend to you tonight for promotion to those ranks. So, the first is Brianna Usko. I'm sure many of you know Brianna and her family, she's a graduate of Hopkins Academy. She has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and psychology from Westfield State. She's been employed as a full-time dispatcher in North Hampton since 2014, and she's actually worked for us in the same capacity since 2018. In June of 2021, she will be a special police officer here. We had already identified several quality characteristics that we looked for in the candidate, and so the choice was very easy, she made it very easy for us to, to bring her on board. She has been in training since then while also juggling her full-time job and the police academy. And she is actually set to begin the academy in about two and a half weeks on June 6th. So, the second candidate is Alex Levine. Alex also possesses a bachelor's degree in legal studies, which he earned at UMass. He has been working with us as a special police officer since July of 2021, and previously worked as a police officer in Belcher Town. Alex has cleared field training and he's actually currently filling shifts to help with our multiple vacancies. And he was just approved, or at least he will be approved very soon for a waiver from MPTC, which will allow him to basically be eligible to work as a full-time police officer until the next available police academy. We plan to send him to the academy that likely there'll be a short break after Brianna's academy, and we plan to send him to that next one. And the final recommendation is Brian. James is a current Hadley resident, and he also has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Elms College. We hired Jamie as a special police officer also in June of 2021, the same Brianna. And he completed training several months ago, and since then, he's been working really hard to do the same thing that Alex is doing and help us fill shifts and fill these gaps with these vacancies that we have. We will be requesting a waiver for Jamie at the June MPTC meeting, which is why, as you'll hear in a minute, I'll be recommending different start dates for all of them. But that will allow him to work on a full-time basis until that next police academy again. All three of these officers meet all post requirements and MPTC requirements for hiring. And so, I would recommend that the motion be that Brianna Usko be appointed as a full-time police officer with an official start date of June 4th, 2022. That Alex Levine be appointed as a full-time police officer with an official start date of June 11, 2022. And that James Ryan be appointed as a full-time police officer with an official start date of June 25, 2022.
I'll make a motion to accept your recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Joyce, I think it was second by Randy. Roll call vote please, Jennifer.
Before I do the roll call vote, if you have more than one device on in a room, that's why you're getting feedback and it's why it keeps happening, so if everybody could just make sure you only got one device going. Roll call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chungalo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Welcome Brianna, thank you for coming on tonight.
Yes, appreciate seeing you.
Thank you guys.
All right, moving along to 6.3, Chapter 90, Scott McCarthy?
Good evening, everyone, I'd just like to give you an update on the Chapter 90 paving. To begin with, the Chapter 90 was kind of left unordered, manager of the DPDW, so myself and the office staff was able to put that all back in order and get our full reimbursements from Mass DOT. With that being said, right now, we have an availability of three hundred thousand dollars for paving. So, I'd like to move forward and try to get some paving in before June 30th, under this, the contract we have right now. The price is going to be a lot cheaper than the next one coming up. Currently, they're only implementing a five dollar a ton surcharge on the asphalt, and I'm assuming next year it's going to be a lot higher. I'd like to propose to the board to do some paving on Rocky Hill Road. But, there's only one, there's one problem with that, and at the town meeting, there was a concern infrastructure and water and so on and so forth. With that being said, I just want the board to be aware that there's, there's some severe water main problems on Rocky Hill Road. I guess in a perfect world, you, you would want to do some pipeline work first before you pave the road. And I just, I, I would like you guys to make that decision of what you would like to do and go, go from there. The pipeline work on Rocky Hill Road basically would start down on River Drive and go up to somewhere in Wompanoag, Breckenridge and that area, I'm not exactly sure where the better connection is. And that's about a mile worth of pipe work. And it's going to be expensive, without a doubt. I did a little research from the contractor that bid our Route 9 project, and last fall, when he bid that, he bid, or the bid, he, he was awarded was a hundred and thirty dollars a linear foot for installing the pipe and the pipe itself. That does not include any fittings, any fire hydrants, any service connection to the houses, any patchwork to the existing road. So, I mean, you, you're probably talking one and a half, two million dollar project. I just, I just feel that the, the road condition, I'm, I'm assuming you folks travel Rocky Hill Road. You know it's in pretty poor condition, and I just, I'd like to do something there, but it might not be in our best interest to do so with the current condition of the utilities underneath.
What were you repairing there the other day, Scott?
We were just doing some potholes, Joyce, we got a bunch of complaints in the area just for potholes, we went out, patched some potholes there in North Maple Street. We're just trying to fill potholes.
So, should be less traffic going 30 miles an hour on that road, right?
Well, I guess the rougher it is, the slower people go too, Joyce, so.
Yeah, I know.
But.
Well, they had, they had asked for speed bumps along that road too, because they didn't like, we've had problems around Rocky Hill Road for a number of years, and the police have been very good about trafficking people and ticketing them, coming along Rocky Hill Road. They've done their part, I don't know if we still want to think about doing with Route 9 now going under construction, if we want to think about putting a few of those speed bumps along in there for a time being, if that's not too costly. Just to make sure people are not, because that's going to become a well-traveled road, as well as my street that I live on, Bay Road, and getting out of my driveway in the morning is not really all that great. But that's going to be what's going to happen when Route 9 gets dug up, and we're going to see that throughout the town.
Yep, there, there is just a touch on that, Joyce, you know, it's kind of off the topic. The project was supposed to kind of get going now to start putting some utilities in the ground, and there is a delay, of course, on materials. So, now they're middle to late June, if their parts arrive, so. It's, they're just doing supplementary work still, and they're waiting on materials.
All right, so what did you think about doing any of the speed bumps on Rocky Hill at some point, you're talking about repaving and things right now, but what about those speed bumps as the Route 9 project goes along? Do you think it's feasible for us to do that along that road?
Well, if you wanted to resurface the road completely on Rocky Hill Road, I'm not a big fan of speed tables or speed bumps, Joyce, especially on a section of road like that, it's pretty long, and I, I know the speed's a problem, but it, it does cause a problem with, for us with snow and ice removal. Especially on a, a road like that, that's not flat, it's hilly and windy, and for us to lose our momentum.
Yeah, but do you think it's, do you think it's feasible for us to even think about doing paving on that road when it's going to be so much more traveled within the next year, year and a half? Do you think we ought to wait on Rocky Hill until after all that traveling is done?
Well, that's a double-edged sword kind of thing, if we don't pave it, the, the constant pounding of the potholes and uneven surfaces, when you get water in there or whatever, just, it makes it break apart that much faster.
Yeah.
And, you know, and yeah, you're right, there is going to be increased load on it, so you kind of would want to wait, but the road's in pretty bad shape, obviously you saw us out there trying to patch it back together. But, I mean, I, I guess in the big picture, Joyce, it's, it's that section there that needs some utility work. What you as the board would like to, usually you don't want to pave a road and then come back in a couple of years and do utility work, it's just, you, you'd kind of want that done prior to road reconstruction.
Will you, you just give us the, whatever you think you need and we'll just help you along with it, okay?
Well, I, I understand that, Joyce, that this is just a big, it's a big ticket item, that's your, your, it's three hundred thousand dollars, and part of it, we're paving over an infrastructure that is not well, it's, it's severely undersized, you know, fire protection, water quality, et cetera, et cetera.
So, our, our Chapter 90 money we got just now was Carolyn, three hundred and something thousand dollars, correct? On the, on the Chapter 90, for right now, we got for the year?
Joyce, we have three, three hundred thousand right now from all prior, left, from reimbursements and stuff that were not processed from the prior management.
Okay.
Myself and the staff were able to get that all together and got our reimbursements back, and we have three hundred thousand dollars. The FY '23 is issued July 1, and there was, I forget Carolyn, you could correct me if I'm wrong, it was winter recovery something or other money that the town got for road work, I believe it was around two hundred thousand dollars, but that has not been released yet.
Yeah.
It's, it's coming.
Yeah, and but then you still have Chapter 90 money on top of that July 1st, besides the recovery money.
Right, we'll get our, we'll get our new installment of whatever the state, the state hasn't said yet what they're giving.
I thought, I thought they did.
I have not received anything on that yet.
Didn't we get some notification, Carolyn, on how much Chapter 90 money that was coming? Or was that just from Dan Carey of what money was going to be allotted from, from the state for Chapter 90?
Well, I, it's part of this, you have to, you, you get notified that there's money available, I want to say it was just under three hundred thousand, but you still have to go through the process of, I've sent the email, they replied back, they're going to give instructions on how to access that money, so.
Okay.
Scott, is this paving on top of or taking down and putting a new base surface?
It, it would be milled, Jane, two inches and then repaved two inches. We can't overlay the road there, just add more asphalt like we've done in the past, the road is too high. We've done in the past, the road is too high and as you start climbing the hill. We're gonna have uh water poems that are. The water, the dri- the road's gonna be higher than the driveway, so we, we couldn't even do that if we wanted uh. So it would be a mill and resurface, but uh. There's other options too, I, I've looked at a couple of other roads, but I feel Rocky Hill's the worst, but there's other problems that. We may or may not wanna address first.
Living in that area, it's, it's my recollection that it was already paved like. From forty-seven at to sunrise approximately.
Yes, prior, prior to my, me coming to the town, it was paved from River Drive to East Street. And the prior director paved from East Street to. Uh, I don't have the address in front of me, but it's where the tobacco barn is there on uh, if you're going up Rocky Hill Road on the.
Yeah, just before the hill, so it's just Rocky Hill Road.
So you would redo that part also or start there and continue east?
We would start there and continue to uh the intersection of Huntington Road. Uh, we don't quite have enough funding to get up by the cemetery.
The, the pipes you talk about, those are just water lines, correct? There's no drainage in the road.
Uh, very little drainage, uh, Randy, uh. There is, I believe, one catch basin uh. Across. If you're going up Rocky Hill Road, it'd be on the left-hand side across from uh. Uh. I, I can't even think, I, uh, the residence name. Uh, but as you start making a little sweep to the left, it's right there. Uh, Fighting Kevich, me, yeah, Fighting Kevich residents would be across the street, that, in that general area, there's, that's the only drainage.
Good.
If, if you're familiar with that area.
So, talking about the, the infrastructure and the pipes. How would you propose, in an ideal world, we would get money to do that with here?
Uh. I, I, I have. No idea, Jane, I, I, I guess it would have to be funded through uh the water department somehow, somewhere or somehow uh. I, I know uh myself and Carolyn have been looking at every grant option and things available and. Lot of, you know, right now, I don't believe there is any available um to even apply for, but. With that being said, I guess our options are pretty limited for funding.
Jane, can I jump in here?
Sure, thank you.
Yep, um, I think, you know, maybe it, it, there are a lot of questions, obviously, um, about this, so. I, I mean, I can't. It doesn't make any sense to me that we would expend the paving dollars without dealing with a long-term solution, right? As um Scott's laid out here, but I don't think we're in a position tonight to really have our heads wrapped around the funding. There's an awful lot of money out there for infrastructure and we all know that. Um, between the Forward Act and this, you know, winter recovery, the ARP dollars. So I'm wondering if it makes sense, um, that it sounds to me like what Scott's saying is this is his plan A. And that he feels that Rocky Hill Road should, to Joyce's point, you know, her question. Um, be repaired in advance of the, obviously heavily increasing traffic we're gonna see as the Route Nine project gets underway. Um, so if that's his plan A, I think that maybe um the financial management team should get together. And figure out what any funding options there are out there, if there's anything that's feasible to make this project happen for Scott. Um, and if the answer to that is no, or we have to wait um till fall town meeting and. Scott doesn't think that we can wait that long, then we should be prepared to find out what Scott's plan. B or C might be relative to spending these dollars. Randy?
So if the intent is to tr- try to find money to be able to repair the water lines and, and that's. Even if we came up with the funding tomorrow, there's no way that the, the water lines are gonna get replaced and the. Road is gonna get paved before they start working on Route Nine. So I don't know, uh, that Plan A is necessarily a good idea right now. I agree that it makes no sense to spend the money to pave and then have to rip it up to repair the water lines. So I think we have to figure out how to get the water lines repaired and whatever timeframe that takes. Uh, we have no choice but to deal with it.
I also heard Scott saying that this money needs to be used by the end of this fiscal year, so Scott, what is Plan B? Because it doesn't sound like we can get our.
Yeah, so, so it, it real, it doesn't necessarily have to be used, it would be. We'd be able to get more bang for our buck, I guess, if we did something now, because the price of asphalt is gonna skyrocket. So my Plan B would request to uh do some work on Hockenham Road. Uh, starting at Mitch's Way to the South Hadley Line. Uh, and right in that section, there is. You know, the water mains, you know, from the seventies, it's, it's not undersized, it's, it's mostly off the road. Uh, there's very little drainage out there, it's uh, that would be my request for Plan B. And I do not have uh. The workup on that in front of me to tell you the exact dollar amount. Uh, the paving contractor looked at it, but then we shifted kinda gears to Rocky Hill Road, because it was in worse shape, but. Uh, they told me that they would be able to accommodate us before June thirtieth to uh do that. If, if you, if that's the direction you folks would like to go.
Randy?
I drive Rocky Hill Road every day and my daughter lives in South Hadley, so I drive to South Hadley quite a bit and I. Think I've tried to dodge more potholes on Hockenham Road than I do on Rocky Hill Road, so. I think Plan B, under the circumstances, is a better idea.
Jane, Bill Dwyer has his hand up, I don't know if you can see.
Sorry, I don't see that, Bill. Oh, I do see it, thank you.
Hi, um, so I, I wanna talk about a Plan C, or maybe it's a Plan D. Um, Scott and I are Hadley's representatives to the Joint Transportation Committee. Uh, Hadley's participation in that has been uh spotty in the past. The Joint Transportation Committee is how we access federal funds for roadwork. And uh, we're really sort of behind the eight ball on this one, um. We've had some, a couple of projects that dropped off a few years ago because they weren't being pursued by. Uh, the car, the, the then representatives. Um, it's not a way to access federal money this year, maybe not even next year. Um, but Rocky Hill Road is a road that is eligible for federal funding. And um, so uh, I've been attending the Joint Transportation Committee meetings. Um, it's a busy time for Scott because uh, oh, lots is happening out on the roads. But I have been able to attend, um, it, it's a, a constant shuffling of this project isn't ready to go. But do we have another project that is, requires less than three million that we could move in? Um, there's design work that needs to be done uh in advance, we don't have that in the bank at the moment. But um, there are longer-term solutions out there. Um, we just have to uh, uh, get, get up to speed on getting back in the line.
Thank you, Bill.
And Bill, I think that underscores that the point I'm trying to make, which is, it seems that. You know, Scott has a short-term issue, which is we need to do something with this chapter ninety money by the end of the fiscal year, so there's a very tight window. Um, but. There needs to be a whole street plan that's accompanied with a, with a funding plan um for the long term. For dealing with all of the in- infrastructure, and I think it would be great to start um a project like that. Now, you know, working with the DPW, whoever needs to and, and whoever on finance um to start figuring. That out because of all of the different funding options that are out there currently. And we don't know how much longer those programs are gonna be available.
So at the moment, Hadley looks like it is in hog heaven, because um. We are transportation improvement program, the TIP. We are um being credited with the work the state is doing on Route Nine. And the work the state is proposing on the bridges, uh, the bridge on uh Route Forty-seven South. Um, so it looks like we're flush with uh federal and state money, but it's not Hadley Projects.
So will that be to our detriment or to our advantage?
I, I'm gonna ask for a footnote to be put in the transportation improvement plan to say that these are not Hadley Town Projects. Uh, my understanding is that chapter ninety was uh sort of a supplement to fill in. Where uh projects for work that did not qualify under the transportation improvement program. Um, so in Hadley, and, and I've done some research on it, their roads are eligible for federal funds and what are not. Uh, River Drive is, South Maple Street is, Rocky Hill Road is. Um, streets off of those are not eligible for federal funding. So that would be something we'd have to fund.
What about, what about Hockenham?
Uh, I believe it is, uh, although again, I can't say um. How, how far back in the line we are.
So it, from my being on the board all these years and taking road tours um over. Multiple years, um, we always went to go around and see actually what roads um were on the list. Uh, of what we could use chapter ninety money for, and that seemed to work pretty well, we, you know, depended on our. Person, as you are Scott now, um, to let us know what roads you wanted to use that chapter ninety money for. Uh, whether it was oiling or stone or paving. Um, but we always went on and we always, you know, took a tour of what we thought. Um, might be feasible to use that money for. Um, you know, I'm going with your gut, you guys plow the roads, you're the ones that take care of the roads, it's not us, certainly, I go to. You know, so I'm, I'm looking for your direction on how you wanna spend that chapter ninety money. And what we should do, yes, our utilities and things are important and you keep that in consideration. When you do, you know, make your list of things that need to get done, whether stoning, oiling. Whatever you wanna do with that, you know, and you figure that out and how you wanna spend it and we'll go along with you.
It, 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 thanks, thanks Joyce for that and, and I would suggest that. I'm just kinda torn with the whole Rocky Hill Road situation, though. Throw a large amount of money at something that we, we probably shouldn't at this point. I know it needs to be done, but I think we should wait on and make a good decision of what. Our future uh steps are going to be to uh do some infrastructure work, so.
So re- so relook at that and see what you can use that money for before the end of the year, yeah.
Yep, I, I.
Even if it's for that section, you know, at least do a section of Rocky Hill Road if you feel that that's what we're gonna do. And at least do that part of it, and then we can do whatever with the rest of the money. Um, you know how far it goes and it doesn't go very far today.
No, that, and that's why uh I'm bringing this to the board's attention, uh. Uh, you know, I guess remotely, it's not my money, it, it's uh, you know, the residents of Hadley and I just wanna. Good, you know, educated decision on, on what to do with this and how it's gonna benefit everyone the most and. I guess what, right now, with that being said, I, I think we should work on Hockenham.
Well, I, I agree with Randy because I drive both of those roads and they're definitely more potholes and. Uh, things to avoid going south from town.
A lot of our roads need attention, we've been neglecting them for a couple of years now. Um, we've been doing side streets and whatever, but um the main roads that get traveled the most certainly need to get looked at the most. Um, and, and go from there, so your decision, we support you, just give us a list.
I, I, I'm going to uh, uh, ask then that you approve that we do Hockenham. Uh, try to get it in this fiscal year, I can uh start getting going on that.
Yes, thank you, hey, Amy.
Amy made the motion.
Yay, second.
Your seconds, any other discussion? Jennifer, roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changeloo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Jane, can I just make a, a follow-up comment though to this?
Sure, please.
Um, I think one of the things that I'm hoping to see that we can improve on, you know, Scott's coming tonight again with, with something that's under a deadline. And it seems that there was a lot, a lot to discuss here. And I'm hoping that going forward, um, you know, we can try to schedule some of these discussions so that we can. Talk, take it under advisement, have some follow-up. Research is needed and then come back, you know, so we're not voting on, on things the very first night that we hear it. Um, and I'm also hoping that as a follow-up, so now that Scott's got the direction to go to Hockenham, that we don't. Lose sight of the fact that he's identified Rocky Hill Road as an issue and that we should support him by. Working together to come up with a plan to figure out how he can get that done in the future.
But some of the thing, but some of the things don't always need to be put off to another meeting, some of the things that people bring to us. Can be made at a decision and at a meeting that is brought to us and not up. Put off and take under advisement, if sometimes we can't make a decision when people bring us something, then something is wrong with this picture. Yes, we can take some things under advisement, but when that, we are under a deadline here, those things need to be made now, not later.
Well, I think what Molly is saying is that we should uh try to plan a little further ahead and get a. Uh, longer-range plan, yes, there's some things that need immediate votes, but there's some things. That are major directions for the town that we need to spend a little more time on and perhaps have more research done before.
But we had a DPW director that did nothing and now Scott is picking up the pieces where he left off, so.
And I appreciate Scott immensely for what he.
Absolutely, so let's not badger the guy for bringing this forward to us at a late date when we're at the bottom of the pits here.
I don't think that's what Molly's saying at all, I think Molly, we're all in agreement. Hockenham, let's, let's go with it, but.
Vote's been done.
I need to do what he really needs and figure out how we can back DPW to get our infrastructure fixed.
Yeah. Well, can.
Now, what's first?
Can I say something, please? I would like to hear from Mr. Dwyer and Scott regarding what it's gonna take. To keep us in the queue for that federal money they were talking about, so that we don't lose out on that. You know, we can get money two, three, four years out, then we can start doing this long-range planning you were talking about.
And that's another discussion for another meeting, so that we can have some better direction. On uh what we can do for long-term. We're doing short-term right now with Scott bringing this forward to us and being able to spend the three hundred thousand dollars before the end of the fiscal year.
That, I get that, Joyce, we already voted on, I have no problem with that, but while Bill ends here. I, and Bill seemed to allude to the fact that. The ball was dropped previously on this federal money and I don't wanna see that happen again, if we can get the money. Then we need to do whatever it takes to get it, that's, that's my point.
And that would be Scott and Bill working on that together, I, I would appreciate that.
Jane, is it okay if I, Jane, is it okay if I just make a few comments? I, uh, give some confidence here, um. So Scott and I, the reason this came to the table today is after discussions, so Scott and I meet every week at least once to go over all of the projects that. Uh, when I say since I've been here, it's been pretty much what's the next crisis with infrastructure? So what happens is Scott will come to me and say, these, these issues are priority or this, this issue's an emergency. And then what I do is I will go back to the finance team and we do talk about, here's the issue. Um, Linda and I have worked closely on several of the projects to see how to fund that. Also, we have grants in the process as well. I, I, I do wanna clarify that there's a lot of due diligence that goes before what you just heard from Scott tonight. What happened was with this particularly, and also on a comment that was made at top fixing other things and we're ignoring them. I want you all to know, Scott and I are working on them at least every week. We go through these discussions and try to see what can we accomplish with what money we have. And what money we know anticipate, or also what money we know is not going to come to Hadley. So we have to prioritize weighing all of that. So this was an example where Scott came and said, this is, does not make sense to pave this road and here's why. I wanted, and Scott wanted to bring it to you to say, this is the type of dilemma that we're getting faced with all the time. And that we want you to say, to make sure you're aware of it when people come, if they complain that Rocky Hills is all beat up and is deteriorating. This is one of the reasons why that's not getting addressed because of other years of neglect that didn't take care of the utilities and all of that. So we are doing some of the things that you guys are mentioning, but we need you guys as the, as now. To do exactly what you just did to say, Scott, you're right, let's, what's the next one on your plate? So I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you.
So what, my reply to you Randy is that Scott and I are working together. To first identify. The, where we were when the project stopped being pursued. Scott gifted me with two fat folders. I have been going through for a couple of projects that were on the transportation improvement plan and then dropped off. I am also trying to be in contact with the gatekeeper at Mass Highway District Two. There is a process for submitting a project. The projects that dropped off were submitted, but never had any, it's unclear how much design work was done. So I think probably the best thing to do is where. Scott and I will work on trying to figure out what happened, do a postmortem on the two files. And then have a discussion about whether those remain priorities or whether there are other priorities. That, that fall under the transportation improvement plan. Basically, anything we come up with will be a few years out at this point. But, but we'll see, we'll see what's out there.
Okay, I appreciate that, Bill, thank you.
Just on another note for, for you guys before we move on, I'm assuming that everyone got the NICS, so know we're going to be. They're going to start prep work tomorrow on Knightly Road and paving on Friday, so that. Job will be complete, that was presented by. By the previous director and was approved by Mass G L T, but we didn't do it last year because of the head wall problem and that's been fixed. So that, that has all been approved and ready to go, so they're going to be starting that tomorrow.
Thank you, that's good. Anything else for Scott?
No, thank you, Scott.
All right. Six point four, DPW wastewater promotion and internal job posting, Jen Provoda, are you here?
I am here.
Thank you.
So the DPW has been having Peter Clough as the interim waste. Meeting, and we would officially like to make him the full time wastewater chief operator. And officially promote him.
Scott, do you have any input on that, please?
Yes, Joyce, in our previous discussions with this, Peter has been doing a really good job with this. He has. The state just recently required us to go all electronic with all our documents back to them. He was able to take care of all that for us and everything down there is really working well right now. Jen did do a search for qualified applicants for that position. And we had two applicants apply and they were not qualified for the job. So, and we have not had any more applicants since. And what this would keep the ball rolling for us because. One of the guys from the highway department has been filling in over there. And I'm assuming that he would like to apply for Peter's. Peter was just an operator and that position would be open. And the highway department employee, I'm assuming would apply for that. And then we could remotely fill our vacancy in the highway department. The highway department has been operating since, I believe, February with one guy short.
So what is Peter's qualifications and what does he need to become permanent chief operator?
He, he, he has all the qualifications, I, I know he has a degree, I'm not sure what it's in. He wasn't available tonight to come onto the meeting, but he has the grade four wastewater license. As we talked about in the past, the state did give him a waiver for site specific in full operator. Cause he's not, he doesn't have the time yet. To get it to go anywhere else, so if he were to leave, that would be no unavoidable, but it's site specific for us. So in the state's eyes, he is qualified to do the job and I, I would support that. I think, I think he is doing a really good job over there. Keep, keeping the operation going. Obviously, you know, he has John there helping on the, and you know, Dennis is there answering questions. When he's working his shifts, so. Under the circumstances, I think Joyce, he would be our best candidate.
I'm, I'm all for it, and how much is Dennis going to be working afterwards until we can get a fill?
He's doing part time for up to 12 hours a week. And he's filling in, it, it's only, like I said, a three man operation over there. And, you know, it's summertime now and people are taking vacations and, you know, things of that. So Dennis is kind of filling in the gap, so I, I would be assuming. Maybe, you know, Labor Day or something, after the summer goes by, we could. Talk about that whole situation and readdress it, but between now and then, I, I would suggest keeping Dennis on.
Yeah, I, I, I know some of these answers, but I just wanted this put out there for the public because they always ask these questions, Scott.
Yeah. No, I understand. But with even Dennis there for the little bit he ha- he is, when everyone is there, the department in whole is able to do a lot more work. It, it, so however you look at it, it's a benefit for us to have that fourth guy, even though it's only 12 hours a week. But we are able to do some more work there.
That's to our benefit for sure, thank you.
Yeah, yep.
You need a motion on this, Jen?
So moved. Joyce seconds, Jennifer, roll call please.
Roll call, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changeloo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone here from the ZB? Who's requesting their filing fee to increase?
I see Andrew Bombardier.
Great, Andrew?
Hi, everyone. Yeah, so this, this is a request to re-increase our filing fee from, from a hundred fifty to $400. Basically, the, the reason for the request is because of increased legal notice fees that we're getting from the Gazette. The, the most recent meeting we posted, we have to post our meetings twice in the paper, once, two weeks out and then once a week out. The most recent one that we did for two meetings that, you know, I did the notices as small as I could and it was $486 for the two notices. So what we had previously been able to do when the notices were cheaper was, you know, we would batch, you know, one or two. We'd, there are two or three rather meetings together and that would, you know, cover the, the filing fee with the Gazette. But, you know, the, just the prices have gone up to the extent that it's now a loser for us. We know that money doesn't come to our, we don't have a, you know, account on that, it goes into the general fund. But it's just something that has come to our attention. And I've been on the board now for, I think about 10 years and we, I don't think it's been increased from 150 in, in that time.
You're not old enough to be on that board for 10 years.
I know, it doesn't seem like it, but.
Carolyn, are there any state requirements that we have to do special things to increase fees for ZB?
I'm not, I'm not aware of.
Great, that makes it easier.
So can I ask Andrew a question? Does people that come before you, do they have to pay a fee to you, Andrew?
It's just a, just a filing fee, yeah.
So are we charging more for their filing fee?
So that's, that's what this request is to increase the filing fee, so then we, we're required to pay for the publication. They, they typically pay for, they, they pre-address and pre-stamp the envelopes for the notifications. But we have, we have to pay for the, to do the legal notice in the Gazette.
So do you think 400 is enough?
I mean, I, I think, so I'm not, I don't, I'm not sure exactly to be, you know, to be upfront, I'm not sure exactly what happens. How the Gazette like prices that out, I don't know if there's any type of, you know, supply and demand thing on how busy they are when they price it out or if it's a set fee. I, I just did that, I, I did the 400 based on, you know, that it's at 150, I was trying to, you know, be, be somewhat reasonable. That I think if it goes up from 150 to 400, then that would, we would be able to, you know, have, have notices for one hearing. At not having a loss with it. And then, you know, but if I'm still able to, you know, bundle together more than one hearing, I think there would be plenty of wiggle room there.
Okay, okay, I want to make sure you have enough money. I see Bill Dwyer has a, and Sue has a hand up, Jane.
Now?
The Planning Board is likewise going to increase our filing fees, we've posted that, we, for our next meeting in June. Likewise, we cover the cost of publication and fees have just skyrocketed.
Thank you.
So we're looking at three, $400 for a legal ad for a meeting.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Sue?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in, you know, I have to advertise my tax titles as well. And it's ridiculously expensive now. But on another note, when we did some work to our house in 1989, when we bought it. And had to go before the ZB, it was $150. So I don't think, and I, the law says it has to be a reasonable increase, so I think we're all set.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the increase for the ZB.
Hang on.
Let's have a second, Randy, and then we'll continue the conversation.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, Amy seconds, okay, Randy.
So Andrew, you said you just paid $486 for one file, was that for one hearing or one? One hearing or two hearings or two people on hearing?
It was two, it was two hearings and it was, it was, so it was two publication dates with the Gazette. The, the publication dates were two weeks apart, so it published twice in the Gazette, but it was for two hearings, so.
Hey, do you, and so do you have any idea what it would cost for one hearing?
I, I don't, just because I, I haven't typically filed for one hearing. I, I know, you know, this increase seems like it's somewhat recent because in the past. I've, you know, bundled together sometimes three or four hearings and it's been, you know, in the 250 range. So I got a little bit of sticker shock when I got this most recent one, I, I think they've increased their prices.
Yeah, well, I know, I know the Planning Board's been talking about their outrageous fees for quite some time, so I agree. I just want to make sure, as Joyce said, that 400 is enough and based on what you just told me, I think it probably is.
So I have an additional different question, when I used to do advertising with the Gazette, they sell a volume. So the more you advertise, the cheaper it gets, are all of these ads put in under one? Under the town of Hadley or are they put in separately under different groups from Hadley? Sue?
Uh, no, the Gazette charges municipalities separately for every, everything they do. I will say, my association is looking to file legislation. To change or to file changing legislation that requires it to be, things to be. Advertised in the newspaper and meet the qualification by putting it on the website. Whether that happens or not, who knows, but that's something I brought to our legislative committee three years ago.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Andrew?
No, nothing else for me, thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second, Jennifer, roll call vote please.
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changeloo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Andrew.
Jennifer, you want to talk about the transfer station contract extension?
Absolutely, um, we went out to bid last year for the transfer station and we went with Solid Waste Solutions. Who is, excuse me, been our transfer station operator for, I think, probably two decades almost at this point. And we did go with them again, they had the best and only offer. And we did include in the contract two one year extensions. I would like to ask the select board to extend the contract for this upcoming year, this upcoming fiscal year. There are no changes to the price, there are no changes to the services. Other than textiles and mattresses recycling that were presented to y'all by Kathy Nelson at the last meeting. But other than that, everything else is staying the same, so I would ask that y'all approve extending the contract for another year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Jennifer, roll call vote please.
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changeloo?
Yes.
Keegan? I'm sorry, hold on, don't do it, Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Sorry, I like to keep you in order.
Thank you. All right, Easy Rider Class Two Auto Dealers License Update.
Can I take that one too, please?
Sure, thank you.
Um, they were not able to get a copy of the plans to the fire department and building inspector as they had been asked to. We received them today, neither Tommy or Mike had the ability to review those plans in a timely manner. So we're asking to postpone this item until June first.
No problem.
Thank you.
All right, and accounting update for fiscal year 23, Carolyn, you get that one.
Okay, so to bring other, either new members or members who are new in the past couple of years. The town of Hadley outsources for our accounting services. So I want to give you, what I'm going to be presenting tonight is that our contract with them will be up in July. And I just want to give you the progression of that contract the past couple of years. And a possible, looking at two different options to pursue. So I, I want to give you a little bit of history, most of you on the board probably know this, but for the public. I'm going to go as far back as when Gail Weiss started as an accountant in 2006, she worked about 35 hours a week. She left in 2015 and at that point, the town decided to, and I may, I, I wrote notes from other department heads. So if I need clarification from anybody who's listening, feel free to butt in. But, so she left in 2015 and the decide, and the town decided to outsource for accounting services. And chose Bay State Accounting, I won't go into details about that, but that was not a good fit. And the town then contracted out with Kingshire Accounting Services, they also left after a few months. So at that point in 2020, the town signed a contract with Melanson. So at that point in 2020, um, the town signed a contract with Melanson. Um, and that contract was for $58,000. Later on in May of two, 20, of 2021, the contract was amended for the next fiscal year for $60,000. In September of 21, ended up hiring an independent contractor who had simultaneously been working with us 10 hours, um, a week. So when they, um, a change, they submitted a change order to adjust for that, uh, bringing Mary on and that added $24,000 to the contract. So at that point, this brought the total amount for accounting services to 84,000 for the remainder of that year. So it was pretty much at 87,000. So we received initial proposal for FY23. We're allowed to extend that accounting contract for another year. We see, received an initial proposal for, uh, for FY23 in the amount of $93,000. So I, I, I thought it was important to share that to, with the select board with that in, increase. And, and I did reach out to Melanson, um, and right away, just to share my concern over that amount. And I wanted to tell you that they did go down, they did agree to go to lower it to 90,000. So I, my history, I've only worked with in-house accountants through my municipal, municipal career. And I, I will tell you, Melanson's been very responsive and any complaints I've received have been smaller issues that you might even find with an in-house accountant. So nothing major, nothing significant. However, I do think there are advantages with having an in-house accountant. Um, and I, you know, just even if there's an issue, you can go across the hall or if they were downstairs or whatever, you could go and, and talk about that one-on-one. I do think there is value to having that, uh, an accountant in-house. And so I just did a little bit of research on that. I've been kind of watching, um, what's happening across the state and accountants are beginning to, uh, resign. We have this great resignation happening among municipal employees. It is very difficult to find, uh, a talented municipal experienced accountant. However, there are some that have been retiring and I've been kind of following what they're doing and they're actually cutting their hours and going to other towns who only need them for, you know, 25, 30 hours. I, I think you could hire an accountant, um, in-house accountant for about 35 hours a week with that $90,000. That would not be their salary. That would be their salary plus the benefits. So I just, I wanted to just share that, um, information with you. I, I want to tell you what, what I would, what I've been thinking about and I would like the select board to, to, uh, kind of weigh in on this. I did talk with Melanson. I asked, I, I've talked with them a lot and they have been very accommodating and that, you know, I told them we were, I was considering presenting this to the select board as a possibility, as, as an option to have an in-house accountant. July 1st is not a good time to make a transition. If this perfect candidate, if we posted this perfect candidate that had years of municipal experience and understood our software program, we found this jewel. Even so, July 1st is not a good time, closing the books and then getting ready throughout the summer to get the free cash certified. Not a good time. So I, I went back and forth and talked with, uh, Tanya Campbell for a while today about that. They were very accommodating. They've gone through it with other communities. Um, this is an option I'd like to throw out to see if you would be interested if we knew that we had the option to extend the contract with Melanson. I do want to put a, I, I, I guess I need to say this. I, I would not be interested in doing RFP for accounting services. I, I do think Melanson is one of the best firms out there and, and there's not a lot. Um, I, I do like working with them. So I, I would like to consider, knowing that we have the option to extend that contract for another year, to also see if they could help if there was a transition, to consider allowing me and Jen in HR to post for a 35-hour position and to see what, who replies. I, I will be honest with you. I think it will be a challenge, but I feel like as the, you know, the, the financial, you know, overseer of, of everything, that I need to provide that information to you, that you're, it's $90,000 outsourcing. You may be able, there may be that jewel out there that you could have an in-house and, and, um, there are benefits to having an in-house employee. Would you be, would that be an option that you would want me to consider is posting for a 35-hour position for an in-house employee? If that person came in and obviously the finance team and anybody else would be a part of that interview process and screening. And if it was agreed that there's nobody, nobody's going to come through this time, that we just say, okay, we did our due diligence and we'll continue and extend the contract from Melanson. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Ask me questions.
How many hours do you think we get from Melanson a week?
I, I don't think we're getting 40. I, I, and I asked that question. We're not get, we're not getting 40, 35 or 40. I can tell you, I, I have to say, because I'm, I'm concerned that, I don't want anyone to get the wrong impression. If I, if I call Melanson and I ask for a report, I ask for something, within 45 minutes I have an answer. So I, I just want to be clear about that.
Yeah, I think Carolyn really, um, I think she packaged the issue nicely. Um, and I would tell you from uh, the nonprofit sector, um, public accounting, accountants are really, really hard to come by these days. So it's not just a municipal accounting issue, but municipal, um, staffing's more similar to nonprofit staffing. It, it's not always top dollar, right? Um, and so a lot of the people who are going into the field tend to go more towards a corporate, um, route where the jobs may be a little bit more high-paying, the benefits may be a little bit more robust. So Carolyn, I think you're right. I think it'll be a, an incredible challenge to find the right person for the job, but doesn't mean that we have to, you know, what, it sounds like what you're asking for is you just want to run kind of a bifurcated path and see which one is going to work out best for the towns. So I'm all for that.
Any other discussion, comments?
Uh, is there any risk of doing, of losing the accountant we have now with this scenario that you're talking about, Carolyn?
With Melanson, no. They, they've been very accommodating, very accommodating.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other comments? Someone want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second. Molly, seconds? All right, Jennifer, roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote. What?
Sorry, no, you're good.
Okay, roll call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chungloo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to old business. 7.1 Russell School Committee Appointment. Carolyn, do you want to speak to this?
Um, my recommendation would be to continue posting, um, and looking for interest and I will do work on a press release. We only have one person who has shown an interest in this committee. Um, so I think we just got to, uh, boost up that, uh, the, the press release for that and just see if anybody's interested. So that would be my recommendation. We were going to, we were trying to make the appointments today, but you, you only have one person. So we would hold off on making that appointment.
You might want to change it to the demolition derby.
I don't think I need a committee for that.
I got rid of North Hadley Hall. It's time to now get rid of Russell School. I got a pathway for two years.
How many members we need on the committee?
Yeah.
Carolyn, how many members would we need?
What did we agree on, Jennifer? What did they agree on? I don't remember. It was five or seven?
I wanted to say it was seven.
Yeah.
We did, I was on the, I am on the municipal building committee for the time being. And it was seven that we thought was a good number.
And I, I think, um, I'm going to have to go back. I, I thought I was copied on an email that got sent. I could be imagining this, but I'm pretty sure there was somebody else that had expressed an interest in this committee. So I'm going to go back. It would have been in like the last month or so. Um, and I don't think it was Courtney, the person who's on the, um, agenda tonight.
Or that, yeah. If they didn't email me, Molly, they didn't express interest because that was the direction, was that it comes through this office so that it's not confusing for people. So if you know who it is, just direct them this way and we'll get them on the list.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering if it's an email that you didn't get, Jennifer. So I will, I'll go back and try to remember.
That was the one thing that we did not do tonight. And probably will, Jane, you would want to put that on the list for the next meeting is, uh, responsibilities for, um, departments.
Actually, Joyce have a whole list on your new business I want to bring up about that. So yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, it's all right. So you're going to do that, Carolyn. Put out another request. Thank you. Okay, streetlight funding update.
Okay, so I'm going to be throwing a lot of numbers out here in a lot of terms. Um, let's see how I do. Um, so just to bring new members up to date, um, we are, we have been in the middle of, uh, purchasing, lights and fixtures, uh, from Eversource. We've been working with a company called Real Term Energy to do the audits and the GIS audits and the research and to help facilitate this. So we are at that point now, um, where we have some upcoming expenses that we will be facing. Um, and I have a recommendation at the end on how to pay for that, but I want to bring everybody up to date. So Eversource, um, had a subsidy incentive, uh, that was ending December 31st. So we moved along pretty quickly during the, the end of the summer and the, and during the fall, uh, to pursue this. Their subsidy is, um, the person, so we, we purchased the lights, um, and the fixtures. We have some invoices from Real Term Energy for the cost of doing all of that auditing. They, they literally counted and did a whole GIS research on all of the lights. Um, and that, that amount is $13,759.22. That is not that, those are invoices that we have that have not been paid. The estimated cost of purchasing the fixtures, which we haven't done yet, is $45,000. The estimated subsidy from Eversource is $37,000. So the, the issue is you still have to come up with the $45,000. Um, and then we would get the subsidy back for that. So we have to come up with, with that upfront money. Um, although the net saving is, it's going to be roughly $10,000. Uh, we still need to come up with the upfront cash of $45,000. When that subsidy comes back, it's going to go to free cash. So what I want to do is tell you where we're at with ARPA, because that will be the recommendation that I would like to make, that we would use ARPA money to do that upfront cost in, as well as pay for the GIS audit. We were allocated, just so everybody knows, a little over 1.5 million. Right now, um, we, for the FY22, we used just under 580,000 to, um, with lost revenue to balance the budget. Uh, in FY23, we used roughly $400,000 to balance the budget. We have about $140,000 that previously was allocated for the DPW trailers and we are moving forward that bidding. We're actually going to finish this weekend, I mean, this, this week. If you remember, a couple of weeks ago, I asked that you would allocate $300,000 for some severe culvert repairs, which Scott and I greatly appreciate. That comes to roughly 1.4. I'm doing rough numbers right now. This leaves enough money to fund the GIS audit and the, the purchase of the fixtures. So my recommendation and request is to pay the remaining cost for the GIS audit provided by Real Term and the anticipated cost of approximately 45 to 50 for the purchase of the fixtures. So that would be 50,000, uh, plus the 13,759. That would be about $63,000. So that would be my request that you would approve to allocate that up to, up to $63,000 for the purchase and the payment of that, of the services provided by Real Time.
Does purchase include installation?
So I'm sorry, what did you say?
They're already installed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And money taken from?
ARPA.
ARPA, okay. Motion to approve.
Sorry, Carolyn, what, um, so I was just following the 1.5 million and all of the set asides or already used or set asides of the ARPA. So if we do the 63, what's left of the ARPA?
Yeah, I, Linda and I were working on those numbers. Linda, what did we say about 100?
She went to bed.
She's there. She's just kidding. I see.
Have to warm up again.
100 for what? I, I just. What was left over after, remember we were doing all that breakdown? It was about 100, right?
Yes, uh, yes, just about 100. And we thought, rather than allocate that, if anything that you've already talked about goes over, we kind of need that buffer in there because, uh, we've always estimated about one and a half million up. Yes, and, but it's more like 1.58, I think. So we've just got, we got some extra cushion in there. I think we need to keep, we need to keep that cushion until these things have actually been expended. So.
There will, there will, yeah, sorry. There's a, sorry, go ahead.
So I was just asking, Linda, so the 62,000, is that feasible?
Uh, that's included in the, um, in what brings us to the.
100,000?
Yes, that, yes, yes. That's already, that's included before we get to that point. Yes.
Okay.
We did figure that in as part of the, part of the grouping.
Okay.
And then the ongoing savings you're saying is $10,000, but that's for you.
Nope, it'll be more than that. It's, um, it is, 10,000 is a one-time. That subsidy that is only going to cover, uh, the cost is 45 to 50, the subsidy is 37. So the 10,000 is not a savings. That's, that's what we're going to, that's the end, that'll be the net. Did I say savings? I did, didn't I? I meant the, the net cost.
The rebate, that's what's the cost.
Yeah, the net cost is going to be about 10,000. The, I'm going.
They're giving us back after we pay one at a time.
We're in full.
Yes. So we're still, ultimately, this will cost us $10,000 for the purchase price.
And then what's the ongoing savings, Carolyn?
There, there are ongoing savings and I'm kicking myself because it's somewhere on this desk. It was, it's a significant savings ongoing. And this is something I'm pretty sure that, that the select board, um, has been looking at for a few years. This has been like a, a priority to do. So, and I can definitely get that for you, Molly. I, I just thought of it. I didn't have that number for you.
That's fine.
So basically, we're using ARPA money and it will ultimately go into free cash?
Yes. Um, $37,000 will go into, end up, roughly that. The subsidy itself, when we get it back, will go into free cash.
All right, I have a motion on the floor from Joyce. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Molly, second. All right. Uh, Jennifer, roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chungloo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, town administrators report.
Okay, so, um, Scott did mention to you about the paving on nightly for Thursday and Friday. I hope that you're all keeping up with the Mass DOT updates every week on what's being impacted, um, with Route 9. And I do, I do have to, uh, show some appreciation to, um, Baltasar for listening to, Tony Morello's called them during graduation to say, make sure you don't do this work on Friday, and they didn't do it. So that, I appreciated that. Uh, and, and so, um, it's also on the website. We're updating it on the website as well. And as you see, I, I send that out to, um, Lynn at the mall. And so we're keeping everybody updated as best we can. Um, I do want to let you know that Hadley Housing Authority, um, does have a vacancy. It actually has two vacancies. One is net, is immediate. Uh, the other one is the governor appointment, um, that will be opening up at the end of May. And I'll be looking into that on the logistics on how that happens, uh, for that governor. Because as you know, one member is appointed by the governor. And just to let you know, we, Jennifer and I are working on multiple, multiple RFPs. So that's, we, that is what we are working on. Um, the RFP for legal services is going, uh, it went out today. And I did separate that RFP. I, I'm curious to see, I'm doing general counsel and then I'm doing a separate RFP for labor. Um, I, I want to see what we get back. And as well as IT services, Jennifer's been working really intently on that, um, RFP. But this is two of, I want to say 11 or 12, Jennifer. Jennifer, at least of our RFPs that have to go out like within the next week or two. So um, if you need us to do anything, say, I know you're busy, but in two weeks, can you do this? So it's been, there's a lot going on this, this, for some reason this year, we we've just got so many that we're doing. So that's, that's all that I have for you.
Thank you.
Carolyn, I applaud you for separating the uh, the, it was a great idea to separate labor in general.
Thank you.
Other items not anticipated, forty-eight hours in advance. I would like to put on next meeting's agenda, more things to do with the um, reorganization, as Joyce pointed out, the liaisons. And I would like to um, actually talk about the role of the liaisons and uh, all of that when we're doing this. There are a great number of committees that the select board has appointed. And I think that though, it's really critical, we have liaisons to those committees as well as to the other town um, departments and boards. So I'm going to put together a list and ask Jennifer to send it to all of you and have you look at it. And then before the next meeting, circle the top four things you would be interested in and hopefully people won't all overlap and we'll be able to cover these committees. In addition, um, other things um, is a discussion of multiple ways to make town information more available to the residents. Question about whether public comment period should only be before the meeting or whether during an actual discussion of an agenda item after the select board has finished discussing it, if we should allow town to discuss it. And I'm sure some of you have things that you would like to see us discuss also about the the role of this select board. So Joyce, anything you want to add on to this?
No, but it sounds like it's very cumbersome um, about we, we know what our boards are, we know what our committees are, that entails uh, the liaisons and what we um, we have with our departments. Um, you know, I'm not, you know, we have a lot of other committees that people have cropped up and wanted people to participate in. And it's very difficult for us to pinpoint select board members to be at every committee meeting. So take that under consideration when you're uh, looking at these committees and things of that nature. We don't have to be present on every committee that's out there.
I agree. We don't have to be present, but we should be the contact point between the committee and the select board, should they have a question.
We, we can be a contact person, but we don't need to be, go to every meeting.
I agree with that. Totally.
Yeah, that's fine.
Amy? Anything, that or anything else you're interested in, talking about how this town operates?
I agree with Joyce. Like, I'm the liaison for the Park and Rec and I've only been to, I think, two meetings and I'm just here for them when they, they need something. So there are a lot of committees and especially quite a few new ones in the past year. But I mean, it is definitely our job to support them. Uh, but we also have.
Go ahead.
Uh, but we also have a job as a select board to govern the town too, so. That's about it, really.
Exactly. It's just that there are so many new committees. We need to make sure we're splitting that sort of responsibility amongst us. And now that we have new members coming in, we need to reassess who's where. Certainly, I know that Joyce, you're public safety, that's, you know, that's a given. And Amy, you're Park and Recs, but there are other areas where we also need you to be known as the person if these places have problems.
Right, absolutely. I think last year was really just me getting my feet wet, which is, you know, kind of learning about the board and it being my first time on it. So I mean, that's why this year um, I'm extremely interested in DBW.
All right, well, so what I'm saying is I'm gonna send a list of all the, all the boards that I can think of, and maybe there are others I've forgotten and you should add to it. And list the ones you would be most interested in. And then.
Yeah, I'm also on the municipal building committee also, Jane.
Well, you, so you can do that when we send this list around. And then if you send it back, I'll sort of sort it out and see how it settles.
That's fine.
Um, Randy, anything you would like to see us do?
Well, you hit on the two big things I was concerned about. And then to uh, Amy and Joyce's points, I think if we get appointed to a, uh, as a liaison to a certain committee that doesn't meet all that often, as long as we just go at least once, introduce ourselves, tell them what we're there for and give them contact information, I think that could be helpful. And then that'll keep us from having to go to meetings every night of the week.
Agreed. Molly, anything you want to add to what we're going to discuss?
No, no, I think you hit um, I think you hit the highlights, you know. So Randy and I obviously are are new, so figuring out what our responsibilities are and if things need to be carved up. Um, Jane, I know you've got an awful lot on your plate, you know, so I'm certainly open minded to um, you know, plugging in wherever I can help. Um, and it'll be great to see all of the committees and subcommittees listed because they're um, you know, like the Housing Production Plan Committee is a subcommittee and it only is going to exist for a certain amount of time. And I'm already on that, so that's, that's easy. But it'll be, it'd be nice to see the inventory because I I have no idea right now how many committees there are, so.
All right, so we'll put that on the next agenda. Anything else people would like to see specifically on the next agenda? All right. Uh, announcements. Joyce, do you have anything for us?
Oh, I guess I do. We, we've had a couple of weeks without a few things, so. Um, I don't know how I acquired this job, but anyway. Um, I do appreciate that the select board does take the time to send out condolences to our families in town that have lost um, their loved ones. So I, I guess I'll continue that because that's been a long time thing that I've been doing. So of of recent, we have uh, Dwight Durrell who has uh, lived in town. He's eighty-three years old and he has been um, a member of our town for a number of years. So I send out our condolences. He does have a wife in town of Donna Durrell and uh, send out condolences to her also. Uh, Kenneth O'Brien um, passed away earlier this month. Um, and he was ninety-four years old, so he was one of our older constituents and um, sending our special um, uh, regards to his family and condolences also. Chris Boucher was fifty-nine years old. Um, and so I'd like to send out our condolences to her family also. Joan Wines at Crowe. Um, Joan, uh, I have known Joan, I had known Joan for a number of years. I was in Mother's Club with her. Um, and so sorry to hear of her passing. Um, she was very active in town. She didn't drive. She was, uh, her sons were very much involved. They were part of the original Hopkins Academy wrestling team that um, participated with Amherst. And um, Joan was uh, forever there participating in their um, activities and Mother's Club. And so certainly are sending our condolences to her family. Edith Matusko, um, ninety-five years old. Um, passed away recently and we certainly send out our condolences to her and her family um, that live here in town also. John Nusko passed away. I don't know if I mentioned it before, but John uh, Jack uh, was very well known around town uh, from the Young Men's Club and taking care of their properties and janitor at the school and ever presented every uh, function that the town had actually and uh, was there on the days of elections and things of that sort. So certainly sending our condolences to his family. Uh, Lilouise Lusco, ninety years old, um, passed away this past end of April. So certainly sending our condolences to her family. Nancy Wysocki um, passed away this past uh, April also. Um, sending our condolences to her and her family. Margaret Kostovka, um, sending our condolences to her and her family. Um, I'm not too sure who Margaret was, but uh, let's see, Margaret.
Peggy, um, they used to come to the Senior Center.
Did she?
Yeah.
Yeah, so certainly.
She worked in the Amherst Schools.
Oh, yes, she did.
A Hadley resident.
Yes, she was. I, yeah, these are all Hadley residents. So just sending our condolences to her and her family also. And I think I did mention, um, I think where I left off was Michael DeCola uh, and his passing away. So condolences to Michael and his family. And that's all I have for this evening.
That seems like a lot.
That, that is a lot, for sure, but.
Thank you for keeping track of that, Joyce. I think it's really important.
Thank you.
Um, other announcements.
How about the, how about the Memorial Day Parade?
I was gonna do that, but you can do it.
Well, you could certainly do it. It's going to be Sunday. And if you have a more itinerary in front of you, Jane, go for it.
I don't have, well, certainly all the cemeteries will be visited early and the actual parade lineup is at one o'clock at the Senior Center and two o'clock, the parade starts. And we'll go through the Legion Lot, down Route Nine to the West Street Common and then to the cemetery on Cemetery Road. Um, if you're interested, you should contact Denise Barstow, who is overseeing the parade, if you want to put a float or anything in it, want to be in the lineup.
And I think that we, if we're, you're participating and going to the cemeteries, we need to be at the Legion by ten thirty, quarter of eleven.
I will send that information out to the select board. Hopefully, we can all represent the town. Um, another announcement is on Friday, the last Friday of this month, which is um, June twenty-fourth, we will be presenting the Hadley Golden Kane to our oldest resident who is Stanley Phil. And that will be two o'clock at Senior Center and all of you are welcome to come.
Sorry, Jane, when is that?
June or May?
Pardon?
June or May?
I'm sorry, uh, May. I looked at June, sorry. May uh, twenty-seventh. Thank you, Randy.
May twenty-seventh at what time?
Two o'clock at the Senior Center.
Two.
We're combining it with our monthly ice cream birthday event. And it will have a crowd.
Sounds good.
And there'll be music.
Is he and um, Mrs. By the same age?
He's several months older.
Oh. They're neck and neck.
They are neck and neck.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Joyce.
Second.
Second by Randy. Jennifer?
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chungla?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Good night to you.
Night.